Is I'm going to give the opportunity for the council members who put forth amendments. So like, I'll tell you the order, Councilmember Chung, Councilmember O'Hara, Councilmember Ruggles, Councilmember Kanuha, and Councilmember Leloy. So on the, what we have a, what we call our pinkies, and these are communications that came in and is not on the agenda, but I believe that they're at the table as well for people to see. So, the council members will get to discuss that as well, but it's not going to get read in because it's not on the agenda. So, moving forward now, and then we'll go into, once everybody gives their summary presentation on what they're proposing, and then we'll go into a big discussion. So you'll have five minutes each to do that, and then we're going to open up, on the floor, for everyone to participate. Is that okay? Okay. So we're going to start with Councilmember Chung.
I don't expect this to pass at the beginning, if at all. This is something that is probably more appropriately approved after everything is incorporated into our present operating budget. But basically, it's as, you know, our former colleague Margaret Willey said, it's not unlike what she had proposed several years ago, and which was approved by, you know, a previous body. And it's a declaration, it's a non-binding declaration, because we are, after all, dealing with a resolution, which has no force in effect of law, except for the rate increases. But, it's a declaration of this council's intent, if all of you are so inclined to approve it, that we try to find ways of cutting our different items within the operating budget, and finding different revenue sources, so that we can fund our operating budget without placing all of the burden, or most of the burden, on real property owners. You know, I have to say, the agenda, when I looked at it, doesn't quite, doesn't really, doesn't correctly characterize what the intent of this is. And I hope it's not a fatal flaw, or anything like that, because it says to reduce the operating budget for fiscal year. That's not what I said. I'm not focusing on the amount of the operating budget. I'm focusing on ways of streamlining our whole budgeting process. But, having said that, you know, that's the intent of my amendment, and depending on how things shake over the next several hours, I hope I can get the support of this body. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chung. Councilmember O'Hara.
We were given a budget that the mayor had worked, and worked, and worked. And for those who don't know about the process, at the county, the mayor requests every department make cuts. And over the last eight years, the departments have been asked to make cuts after cuts after cuts. This has been going on because of the economic doldrums that we have found ourselves in. The economy has actually picked up. It may not have caught up with us in Hawaii, and I always joke about the fact that Hawaii's economy kind of cycles a couple years behind, say, the mainland economy, but that's just the way it is. And I understand the need for increasing revenues, much of which is outside of our control, meaning, this is again, a year for negotiations of union wages, and the county has fought very hard to keep that at a minimum, but we also recognize that our costs of living are raising, are going up, and our union workers were awarded a increase, not what they had asked for, but they were awarded an increase this year and next year. This is all part of the process of running government. Also, we were seeing a decline in taxes from the state. The TAT, as we refer to the transient accommodation tax, was cut back even further than it has been in the past. And this may be a trend that we will see continuing into the future, especially from what we're seeing at the federal level, and budget cutbacks that are going to hit Hawaii hard. We're talking anything that smacks of welfare economics, is under attack by the Trump administration. So, the state is going to have to draw its purse strings very tight, in order to deal with some of the cuts that are coming. And so I think we can anticipate less taxes coming from the state to the counties in the future. There are ways that we, there are methods that we can move on, including an overhaul of our property tax code, which I think is very much overdue. We've talked about it for 20 years, and I think it needs to proceed. But, dealing with the mayor's budget, not wanting to make significant changes, or increases or decreases, because there really is very little place to take away, and we talk about additional revenues, but we need to implement procedures to put that in place. So with that in mind, I tried not to maneuver the budget away from the amount that he was trying to get to with his real property tax rates. And in so doing, I did lower the homeowners rate and the agricultural rate, and took up that slack in some of the other categories, trying not to do any great harm to any particular Every dollar in tax burden that we put on our residents' shoulders and businesses hurts. It hurts me to do that. And so we have to do this in a very judicial, reasoned, and measured way. I had asked Finance for the model for calculating the tax rates, and our director wisely said, "Well, if I give it to you, I need to give it to everyone." And I'm afraid that may have opened a bit of a Pandora's Box, but in another way, I think it's really, really good that the council members all get involved in this process, directly involved, rather than just looking at PDFs and hard copy of budgets and trying to make sense of it. You need to get your hands in there and start working it. So, I did work it, and the rate modifications that I have moving forward as Communication 293.2 are pretty much in line with the existing budget of the mayor's. I couldn't come up with the exact dollar amount, because real property likes the tax rates to be either a zero or a five. It's nice and cosmetically nice, makes it very hard to hit an exact dollar amount. And coming with a little bit of an overage, I put that back in a manner that is divided equally amongst the nine districts. So that's the gist of my amendment to the mayor's tax rates. It's a smaller increase for agriculture, a smaller increase for homeowners, and a slightly greater increase for most of the other classes. Affordable rental is kept flat, at the same rate that the mayor proposed, and I kept his conservation properties rate as well, because I think we want to encourage conservation. Thank you.
Okay. And do you want to continue, since you have the floor? Do you want to, I'm going to make an exception for you, continue on all of yours, so that we can move to the next council member. So if you could move to, I guess, your Communication 91.2, is that?
91.2 is an effort to restore the contingency funds that the county council relies on, to do projects within their districts. While the mayor has said that he restored the contingency funds in his second budget, it wasn't to 100%, and he's aware of that. So this is to add the additional amount, so that it brings our contingency funds up to the 100% that we originally had. It's not my favorite method of doing this, and I think a cleaner method of doing that would be the next Communication 91.21, which would take that, those funds from the fund balance of the county. That's another way to do that restoration to full value. And Memo 3 is what is attached to Communication 293.2, where I've adjusted the revenues from the real property tax rates, and taken the little bit of overage that was created, and used that to restore the contingency funds. That's, in my opinion, the cleanest way to do that. So those are the 1, 2, 3, those are the three memos, Communications 91.2, 2.1, and .35 that I submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see that Councilmember Eoff has a communication also. Councilmember Eoff?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, mine is Communication 91.37, and I was actually asked to do this, requested by the Finance Department. It's pretty much a housekeeping, because the increase, the 24,900 increase is offset by a 24,900, the increase into the expenditure is equal to the increase in revenue. So this is due to a change in the state's system for state ID program, and it's new software that we pay the city, my understanding is we pay the city and county to utilize it, and then we get refunded by a grant from the state. So it's a reimbursement. And I don't know if that explains it well enough, but if there's any questions, I think they could be asked later. But that's the gist of it. Doesn't really change the bottom line anywhere.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruggles?
First, I want to say I appreciate all of the options that we have on the table, and I think it's good that we've all brought a different perspective to solving the same And in the long run, I know we're shooting for the same goal, which is to do right for the people of the, for the people of the island who live here, who contribute to our economy and raise families here. I've introduced this amendment because I'm concerned that across the board increases on all property owners are regressive. And as one Dr. Rodriguez, a testifier, mentioned, Hawaii already has some of the highest regressive tax systems of our nation. And so, the plan that I've introduced is meant to go hand-in-hand with exemptions, and that protects low-to-middle-range homes, businesses, and our disadvantaged populations. Our office has obtained spreadsheets for certified values from real property tax for 2018, and we've explored nearly 50 tax scenarios with exemptions, and this was our best scenario. It has the best spread that we could find. And we found that we can balance the budget without raising the minimum tax, and without raising it on homeowners, and without raising agricultural rates, while protecting small businesses and residents in the long run. And we can do this by increasing rates on specific classes while providing an exemption. So my amendment is meant to go hand-in-hand with exemptions, which a supporter and a testifier fortunately submitted for your review. And without exemptions, a percent increase in somebody's marginal tax rate, the same, they'll be experiencing the same marginal tax increase, I'm sorry, poor people will be experiencing the same marginal tax increase as rich people will, which is why the exemptions are in there. And this follows the same principles that we use for homeowners, so that we don't affect our homeowners disproportionately, and why we have a 40,000 exemption for them. And so I've used those same principles to apply for the business and industrial classes. Businesses like basically Books or Suusan wouldn't feel the effects, and in fact, their property taxes would be slightly reduced. Same principles for apartment, so that we can protect rentals that are not condos and time shares, which make up a lot of the apartment class. At a time of massive wealth and income inequality in our nation, we need a tax system that is based on ability to pay in some way. And with this scenario, coupled with exemptions, make sure that a $200,000 rental home isn't having an equal increase in taxes as a $1 million, or $30 million rental home. So I have, I have numbers, I've run them on how all of these increases impact each class. I can pull up each TMK, so I'd be very happy to answer any questions that anybody has. And I just want to make sure that our tax increases are not putting burdens on those who can least afford it. And in the long term, this is a plan that will protect homeowners, protect people who live on ag land, and protect the disadvantaged and nonprofit property owners who are currently qualifying for the minimum tax, which this plan would make doubling unnecessary. So I appreciate your attention and your serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Leloy?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to request a personal privilege, please. I'd like to address our colleagues from the testifier stand, please.
Okay. Sure.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the county council. I know this is a little bit of a different optics, which is why I chose to sit here. I have introduced Communication 9140, and need to share the answer to the question, "Why?" Why I prepared Communication 9140, which amends Bill 11 Draft 2. And I hope I can actually capture a lot of what we heard today in public testimony, and a lot of the options of what we have, by way of different tax proposals. What Communication 9140 does is create a safety net, and is intended to address public health, public safety, protect our kupuna and our keke. And if we fail to act fiscally responsible this year, the financial shortfalls will be compounded. We face the reality that the TAT tax continues to be siphoned off by the state. Siphoned to a point where we can no longer rely on it as a revenue source. Despite six years of record revenues from the tourism industry, we find ourselves with multimillion-dollar debts. The amendments proposed in Communication 9140 sets the table for what I hope will become a keystone of the hard work and the commitment ahead for all of us. What lies ahead? Shared sacrifice, economic and revenue potential, and a safety net for Hawaii County. First, shared sacrifice. My communication proposes payroll cuts for elected officials, the office of the mayor, and all nine of us. We should lead by example. If we ask others to sacrifice, so should we. Second, economic revenue potential. Of the vacant or newly created positions requested by this administration, this amendment maintains those positions that are directly related to protecting and reviewing our largest source of revenue, real property tax. We need to get the right people on the bus in the right seats. In 2012, Legislative Auditor provided a report evaluating property taxes. This report provided 40 recommendations, and the council in 2012 adopted it by communication. And I urge the administration to use this report as a roadmap, and the positions maintained by Communication 9140, use it to look for new opportunities. Use it to be an economic potential and revenue generator with our most important revenue source, real property tax. But most importantly, begin to realize a revenue that cannot and will not be siphoned off by the state. We need to protect this. Finally, a safety net. A safety net that's intended to address public health, public safety, and the protection of our kupuna and our keke. For public health, this amendment provides funding for the continued research on rat lung disease and rapid ohea death. Rat lungworm disease, Hawaii County has thousands of people on catchment water systems, especially in the areas of Puna, volcano, and Ocean View. Rat lungworm disease is serious, and we are fortunate to have the best research team at UH Hilo. We need to support them with their research and their efforts. It will go a long way for so many of our residents. Rapid ohea death. Our endurance is directly linked to the protection, health, and vitality of our native forests. Though ohea has immense cultural significance, creates a canopy that fuels our water sheds, feeds our streams, recharges our aquifers, and produces our water supply. This is our kulianna, regardless if we're getting state funding or not. Finally, public safety. Public safety is a core need for residents and visitors. Communication 91 provides fire department, police department, and prosecuting attorney's office with $450,000 to fund this core need. $205,000 is being directed to Puna Police to address the concerns that we have all heard by so many families in Upper and Lower Puna. Finally, our kupuna and our keke. The leadership at the White House has sent alarming signals that our kupuna and our keke are at risk. Communication 9140 provides assurances with meals for our kupuna and keke we need, and it is our duty to take care of them. It is my goal that this communication and this presentation sets the table, sets the table for a narrative that all of us can take back to our communities, on why we made the business decisions on whatever real property tax rates and schedules we adopt, but also how we choose to take care of our community. We must be responsible, and we must fix the financial problems, and I think that will be done in this framework. It's a multi-pronged approach of shared sacrifice, economic and revenue generation and potential, and creates a safety net for Hawaii County. I look forward to working with you collaboratively, which I trust will be two or three hours from now, but I hope as we walk out of here, this framework, this multi-pronged approach will move us forward for everybody in every district. So thank you.
91.41, 91.44, and 293.5. Yeah, if we can find this in the stack of paper. I think it's already becoming quite self-evident that council members are quite impassioned about this process that we're going through. And make no mistake, each of us has spent many hours sorting through the paperwork to try and figure out what's best for our communities. I'll speak for myself, my phone has been ringing off the hook concerning real property tax increases, fuel tax increases, the budget. And just to briefly summarize, my proposal to the budget is to actually end up with a $289 million budget, throttling back on our revenues from real property tax by about $6 million, by reducing the proposed rates of about 20 cents across the board of the proposed increases. To offset that, my proposal also is to look at mass transit, and we know we need to fix mass transit, but I don't think throwing a lot of money at mass transit right now is the way to do it. What I think we need to do is evaluate what we need to get done, and then act upon that. New buses, I think, are important, but we have half the bus fleet not working, so I want to put an extra $130,000 towards maintenance to get those buses up and running, and then we can see where we're going through that. I'm not going to belabor, because we're going to have a lot of work to get done here, and I have other council members coming after me. I support Councilman Chung's intent of reducing the tax rates back to the current rate for the next fiscal year, because I think we need to pay attention to the budget. I've also listened to my constituency very closely. Since the year 2000, our county tax budget has increased by 150%. Our population has increased by one-third, and having another bump in our real property tax does not set well with the constituents. I get it. I understand. For all the arguments that we can hear and all the discussion, I think where we are headed is for a long conversation to strike the balance that we need to do in there, but we have to pay attention to our expenditures, not pay attention to our income stream, and allow that, and allow the expenditures that we want to do to force the income stream up. We have to control our expenditures. So first, we set what we're going to get, then we figure out how we're going to spend it, not the other way around. So my proposals, again, are to decrease overall expenditures, and some of the sourcing will come out of the funds, about $4 million would come out of the increase in the fuel tax. And we have a little bit of a stutter step here, because I think the way we're approaching this is, well, in my mind, backwards. I come from private industry, and you do it all at once. You do it, don't do it by incremental steps, because we're missing part of the component. So I'll be putting forth my proposals as such, and I think we're headed for a long day as far as working out the compromise between all of us. So with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kanuha?
So difficult to, I'm just going to go off of how we, and this isn't that nobody's fault. I think it's important for us to look at this process and see how we can do it better. And I think, I mean, a lot of times, I mean, since I've been on the council, this process hasn't been as complex as how it is now. So I think we need to reevaluate how we go through the budget for next year, and this is that nobody's fault. I'm just speaking as myself in going through this process, you know, it almost seems like we're at a huge disadvantage, and I think that for next year, we really, really have to look at how we go through this, because, you know, this is almost like last minute to me. And dealing with everybody else's amendments to this, and really trying to dive deep in how this will affect each and every resident of this island. So, saying that, I did propose an amendment, and it really doesn't do everything that I wanted to do. Because I, you know, like I said, we're at a, I'm at a disadvantage here. I didn't vote for the original budget. I didn't, and that's, you know, not to say that it isn't good or anything, it's just I didn't like how we were going. I didn't feel that we were doing the best job that we possibly could. So I did put in a amendment, I reduced the overall RPT by a million 1.6 and so change. I took out some positions that I felt that, I mean, most of them were funded, vacant positions. I know in the meantime, there have been efforts to, within the administration, to fill a lot of these positions. I'm not saying any of these positions are, are, you know, not to be supported, I think. I just felt that if we're going to be increasing taxes, we got to look at what we can do to reduce the amount we're spending. So I did as much as I possibly could, in the limited amount of time that we had, to do some of that. And then we can argue about the positions and who's currently, I mean, if the positions are filled, fine, or in the process of being filled, great, but it was something that I felt necessary to do, you know? Reduce a little bit, it just doesn't- It just doesn't, it didn't seem practical to me to increase taxes without doing some reduction or more, as much reduction as possible. I also took out contingency funds. I know I've been advocated, we've all been advocated for how much, how effective it is that we do of these contingency funds. It really benefits the community tremendously. But again, you know, if we're going to be raising taxes, I think a reduction in some of this, I felt, was necessary. I also didn't feel that the positions added to this amended budget was necessary. Again, if we're going to be raising taxes, why are we adding more positions? Even though I feel a lot of them are necessary, I advocated for the homeless coordinator position, which I feel is a tremendous need in our community. But I think our current administrator is doing a tremendous job working with the homeless on this island. So, I took that out. What else did I do? I didn't do too much, but again, you know, I'm not, I'm not happy with the process. I'm not extremely happy with my proposition. How we're going to go through this, I have no idea. But saying that, I mean, I know, I know, just real quickly, I appreciate Mr. Chung's amendment to the resolution to say that next year, we're going to possibly lower. I remember Margaret doing that, and I voted against it. I think myself and Brenda Ford voted against it. I forget who else. But I felt that, you know, just by talking about it and saying, "We're going to do it," you know, just didn't do it for me. So, you know, it was, that's why I voted no on that one, because I knew that the future would be like, okay, see, they voted for that last year, but what are they going to do about it? And I knew that we weren't going to do anything about it. So, anyways, that's just my two cents, I guess. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thanks. And Eileen, you, before I speak on mines, you had one more that you were going to speak on?
Yes. 30, Communication 91.38 is an amendment to the Draft 2 of the operating budget. And this addresses something that Mr. Kanuha just brought up as well. This is a new position that's being created in a very small department, but a very meaningful department, very important department. I hold dearly the work that IT does for the county. I know that all of our, what, 2,500 employees are not on computers, are not on internet, but quite a few of them are. And for a department that has 2022 employees, they do a fantastic job for us. But there's so much more they could do for us to create greater efficiencies in county operations. And I think the intent, as I understood it from Ms. Ng on this, she is our Director of the IT Department, on this request for a deputy director was a need for someone who could serve as a liaison between departments. Perhaps she'll take that role, and the deputy will do what she's currently doing, or however that was intended. But I don't see that as the best approach. If we're going to be working within the departments to improve their IT interface, we need someone in each department who is that liaison. There is already somebody in each department attempting that. They may need additional training, or we may need to hire technician level, but not a deputy director. So, I'm asking to remove the deputy director position and instead allocate that money for other uses within the IT department. They need additional hardware. They need additional software. They need additional equipment and servers and et cetera in order to serve the county better. So, I'm just reallocating that money within the department. So, that's what Communication 91.38 is.
Thank you. Okay. So, my Communication 91.36 is, it doesn't increase or decrease the budget. It just moves some money around, and I first had it taking it from one of the positions from the mayor's office and then shifting that, a portion of it, to the prosecutor's office. But I do have an amendment that, after speaking with Mr. Okabi, knowing how important that position is to the mayor and the mayor's office and for the public as well, that I decided to put another amendment in to take it from the IT position, fund it with that, and then the balance that is left over on that deputy IT position is to put the rest into, I think we put it into equipment or, but we did call the director to see which area that she would put it in. So, I'm going to be shifting that. So, I just want to let you know. So, there's two communications that, two communications on here that doesn't increase or decrease the budget. It just, that's Councilmember Eoff's and then my amendment as well. Okay. So, opening it up so that we can start to try and narrow it down. Who wants to go first?